Pull out the worst out there.
Okay.
Alright, okay, it's one thirty, we do have a quorum, welcome to the meeting of the planning commission on July fifth, two thousand thirteen. First order of business to approve the amendments that are in your packet. You can't read through those, any questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments.
Second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Tim, you have anything?
No.
Bruce? Larry?
No, Jeff?
Moving on, any unfinished business, Chad?
No.
I guess you guys have anything you want to add before we get started? Come on, wait. Um, don't need a field case?
Yeah. So there's just one. It's an application submitted by Deep Creek Lakeside Properties LLC for variance to allow the construction of a single-family residence to within twenty-one foot of the front and rear property lines. It's located at one sixty-five Highwood Drive, map fifty, parcel six seventy-seven, zone Lake Residential One.
Any problem with this?
No, it's kind of an odd lot, you can see it's, um, it's very shallow, so Homewood Drive there, that would actually be the front, we have a forty-foot setback. So you've got a forty-foot front and rear there, so you can see it doesn't leave much room for a house on that lot, because you're looking at just twenty, twenty-two or so from the front or rear there now.
We had one up there two months ago, I think, it was the same idea, it's, it makes a lot of sense if you go up there, lots are like rectangles with the, you know, they're all the way.
Yeah, they're small lots, just irregular, narrow. But they're shallow on some sides.
They are plenty long, like, yeah, they're plenty long, but they're just not from, and it's a little, it's a little road.
It's gotta lay it out like Mark Hill Road laid it out, you know, that, that little narrow lot with the...
Yeah, probably so. It's up there in a little place I haven't even been up there before, but it's, we just had one of that lot right next to a couple, a few months ago. They're not building any big things, it's just the way the lots are.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Any concerns with this? Anybody else? Send it on down, yep, alright, send it down to Bruce then. Proposed water and sewer plan.
Sierra do that?
Yeah, I'll come up, I wish I had more to present. But I don't have, I don't have...
I'll do your chair.
Oh, I'll just stand, hopefully we can make this pretty quick. So, the utilities department, they applied for some ARC funding to put a million, a million gallon water tank on top of West Mountain to improve water pressure for the users up there. That is not specifically under water and sewer plan, so we're gonna add it so then they're in compliance whenever they go for the funding, that's essentially the reason for the amendment. In addition to that, I'm part of the Bradford watershed committee, and we're kind of looking at things that would keep that water supply safe, and so I wanna put a couple of things in terms of the water supply for Bradford Lake in the work that the group has been trying to, you know, summarize what the work, the group has done the last couple of years, so. Those are the two things that will be amended into the water and sewer plan, so after you guys approve it, then it'll go to public hearing, and then the county commissioners can adopt it, and send it to M.D. for their, and Maryland Department of Planning for their approval. I don't have, like, the amendment itself in hand yet, working on that.
Are we gonna be good on the time frame?
We should be good on the time frame, so, yep. And so I, I guess...
What's the reason for the amendment, is it like more water than...
Yeah, so currently the folks at, on West Mountain Road are experiencing low water pressures, like, especially the ones with higher elevations, with this million gallon water tank will have more water pressure, especially as more houses come on.
What's the usual, five hundred?
Ah, I know, there's something that, there is a water tank up there that exists right now, but I... But I do not have the capacity for it.
Okay, I was just asking.
Yeah.
We were having trouble getting water flow stuff even at the bottom now at one time for, for sprinklers and stuff.
And I don't know how, like, what the capacity of the, the reservoir up there is either, so I'd probably add to that.
Love to go up here, like.
Yes, so...
We need to definitely, definitely need it.
Yeah, and then...
Will this help keep up, you think, for time to come?
Yeah.
Or are we just catching up?
Yeah.
Uh, this, well, this has been, well, this has been studied, so I think this is what the calculated capacity is, that is needed, so hopefully this will meet it, and then we won't have to add on to it again, so.
And with ARC funding and M.D.E. funding, they're covered?
And I think, let's see here, in a community block grant, which is federal funding, um...
CDBG?
Yep.
Okay.
Looks like that, those are our main sources, so.
So the cameras might gonna have to find?
I'm not sure about that one, so.
Um, that has nothing to do with what we have.
Yeah, but, uh, I think CDBG, sometimes there's a match involved with that, but it could be in kind, so it might just be our engineers' time or something like that, or putting the project in, so, yeah. Any other questions?
Any other question, yes.
Where's the water tank gonna be put, is that gonna be out of the, is anybody gonna be complaining where it's being placed?
I don't think so, so...
Is it on county property?
Uh, it is, not sure if that's county property, I do have maps of the location, um, and I have like the coordinates here, but it's like kind of just north of the lake, the, the reservoir for the Askey, and it's on the bigger parcel, so I'm guessing that's county property, Chad?
Yeah, is it the one right at the corner of West Mountain Road and Askey?
Yeah.
So it could be very visible, I think Kendall Camp and some of those, but, um...
We could paint it pretty.
They're, you know, they need to have a place that's higher elevation, so, you know, that's kind of where it has to go.
Like a big experience deep creek, stick them inside of it.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, is it on county land, I'm pretty sure it is.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Some side area.
Pretty much for twenty grand, a little bit, yeah.
Any help?
No, do you want to make a vote on that, uh, so Sierra can, um, proceed?
Okay, I need a motion.
Well, maybe that way among the plan to include the one million dollar water tank, as stated by Sierra.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, Chad.
Thanks, Sierra.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
I probably will.
Do you, uh, Sierra, also, I don't know if you want to mention the ag?
Yeah, so...
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, so the ag land preservation, so mouth applications were due on Monday, and we submitted twenty-one applications, that is an unprecedented amount of applications. Twelve of them were repeats, one of those people got an offer actually today, so I don't know if they're gonna pull it out or keep it in, because they're, I think they're asking price might be different, and then, um, it's a total of like twenties, seven hundred acres, if we get it all preserved, but mouth has an unprecedented amount of money, normally have like forty, forty-five million, this time they have ninety-five million, so hopefully we'll get some of these projects off our docket, because otherwise I don't want to have to keep on. Some people have been on this list and like, this is like the fourth or fifth time they've applied, so fingers crossed we hear back, and, um, they also get new appraisals this round.
Have they just not gotten our offer, or have they just refused the offer?
Um, some of them, we just run out of money by the time we do that, and then, so the county gets a pot of money and they just go down the list, um, and then once they get to a certain point in the list, they're like, this is all the money we have left, you can either take it or leave it, a lot of times people are like, nah, I don't want it, but the people who have like fifty acres might need their, you know, their actual value of the farm. Um, and then once those applications are left over, it goes into what they thought with the state, but typically they go based on like the farms that don't really care how much the land is worth, so if you're willing to take a hundred bucks an acre, because all you care about is like, nobody's gonna cut this up, they're gonna, you know, acquire those first, because it's cheaper per acre.
More acres per buck, yeah.
Exactly.
So that, or that's changed.
Yeah, so, here's hoping we have some good luck next year, but we really won't hear anything back until spring next year, so.
But the ninety-five million, that's statewide?
That's statewide, and we'll divide it up between all the counties evenly for the first round, and then the second round, we'll have whatever's left over, so, fingers crossed that we'll have some projects all done, now, because of it, I know there's been like three or four more people on my list for next year, so hopefully I get some cleared out.
So how many got, got through this past?
This past year...
I know at least one, because of my clients.
Yeah, so two, um, so they've, so we've gotten, we're up to four offers, two of them have been accepted, but I turned in sixteen last year, so, it was about two thousand acres of farmland, so, yeah.
So in years past, when I dealt with that more, I think the most we ever had was maybe five or six people a year, so Sierra's definitely been busy with that the last couple of years, so it has been unprecedented how many she's processed.
They're getting real like nice processed down in terms of like the mapping, and like we have a whole dashboard, so when people have buildings, I can just add them anywhere, from anywhere, like on the website, so, working on, the other thing is our, we have to go out and inspect these farms and make sure they haven't built the houses, or have any local dumping or anything, so, working on getting all those, that paperwork in place, so we can just do the fieldwork, come back, print out a report, and be done, so, making good headway there, so.
I did one about twenty-three years ago, I'd still do it again today, so.
Anything else on this? Very good.
Alright, awesome, no problem.
Uh, subdivision black.
Thank you for the chair.
Yeah, we've got, um...
Pull and run east?
Yeah, pull and run east, I've got on the screen up there, um, this is a nine lot subdivision, preliminary approval granted back May twenty-twenty-two, these are all on thousand acres roads, so no, um, no road infrastructure or anything, they've already approved a couple lots already for final, so this one's ready. For final approval, I don't have any other issues with this one, I think the health department's...
Just, just in addition what we did last month, or the last meeting?
Yeah, so last month we did lots one, three, five, and eight for final, so this is now...
This wasn't ready at that time.
Yeah.
And there's no difference in the roadway?
No, these are all preliminarily approved.
The golf course lot, I think they are.
Um, yeah, I think they have, but the golf course there.
Any problem with this?
No, um, I will hold the plaque, health department still needs sign, they were, it was out, but I think they're okay with it, so.
You want us to get voted on then?
Yeah, I think so, and it would just be contingent on getting health department signature before I release it.
Motion?
No.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, Chad.
Okay. And then we've got Cathedral Springs, uh, this was another one, this was twenty-one lots approved preliminarily back in May twenty-twenty-two, and they've approved a couple already, now this is for lot twelve. Now, there is one issue with this, you can see right here where the sewer line comes in, I talked to Public Utilities this morning, they need to go and confirm that the sewer line is actually brought to the lot, um, so they're okay with the plat being approved, they've already signed it, but I agree that, um, if you do want to approve it, it would be contingent on them doing the final field check, just to make sure the sewer line has been brought up to the lot, and I would hold the plat, wouldn't release it till they confirm that.
Did it miss the corner or something? Or that is there all?
Just that it's there. So there was some confusion about how far in here it was, I think it's to some point that Public Utilities knew about, uh, but they just haven't actually been out and confirmed that it's up to this point, they want to make sure it's to the lot, and there's not gonna be a confusion, if somebody buys that, that they don't have to bring it, there's no question about who's bringing the sewer to the lot, so.
But that ha, we need to make sure that that hits the lot.
Yes, yeah, and so our approval will be contingent on Public Utilities giving me the okay, I believe they already signed the plat with that, with that in mind, that they were gonna go do the field check, and that any approval will be contingent.
Any other concerns?
No.
Motion?
I may have to...
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So moved, Chad.
Okay.
Annual report?
Yeah, I think you all had a copy of that, uh, this is something that the state requires us to do, um, so I have to go through and just for the calendar year, figure out how many houses we did, how many residential permits, how many subdivisions, and classify all that, and part of what they want to look at is how many we issued in a PFA, and how many were non-PFA, of course, we have very small amount of acreage in those priority funding areas, um, the general philosophy of the state is try to push as much of your development into those areas, which makes sense, because that's the areas you have public facilities already, but in Gertet County, since we have such a small amount, it's, it's not really practical, it's very hard to push all our development in those small areas where we have public water and sewer, basically.
I got a question on page three, just to help me understand, the residential capacity that we have, is that what we have and what we can have, or table available, or what's remaining?
That would be what's remaining, and I didn't have a new version of that, I checked with, um, the planning office, and that was, the most recent they had was in twenty-seventeen, so it's an older, uh, data, I just put it in there and just put a note that that was the last one I had, so, um, I don't know how accurate it is, but it's pretty...
So we can double size it in the calendar?
Potentially, yeah, you potentially would have that much more capacity that you'd like over there.
That's what I was, yeah, hasn't happened in the last twenty years, so.
Yeah, you, it's, that's the kind of the maximum that they say, that's the capacity you have, yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if it was new and existing.
I believe that's all just new.
Okay, that's what I got out of it, I was, I just wanted...
Anybody else have any concerns about the report?
Not like that, I don't have any other questions.
You need approval of this?
Yeah, and then I would, um, I'm required to share it with commissioners and board on planning, or Maryland State Planning, once you've approved it.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, Chad.
Okay.
Discussion about the, uh, changes to water, does it have zoning ordinance regarding container home and accessory building?
Yeah, I gave you all some handouts on that to kind of guide our discussion a little bit, um, if we want to start with the shipping containers, so, I think probably everybody's been here, at some point, we've discussed this for a couple different meetings, but, um, shipping containers are not currently defined and regulated in the zoning ordinance, in the deep creek zoning ordinance, and there are no specific prohibitions against using them as accessory structures or dwelling units, they're subject to typical building codes and setbacks like any other structure, so right now, if somebody wanted to use those, maybe make sure they have a sprinkler in them if it's a new home, meeting energy code, meeting installation, everything. I've put a couple possible definitions, just from things I looked up, you know, so this is one route we could go, we do want to, um, amend the ordinance to regulate those, there's a definition there for a shipping container, uh, and a shipping container dwelling, um, I, I think probably the first thing we need to think about is, is this something that you all want to regulate specifically for that type of construction, or is the main concern more aesthetics? Somebody could still build something that looks very similar to this, so if this is basically a concern of the way these look, that may be something that, uh, a more of an aesthetic zoning regulations may be in place, and that's something that you have all kind of shied away from, so, I'll kind of open up, I put some just kind of general questions here, you know, should these, if we want to amend this, would we make them permitted, not permitted, permitted with a special exception? If it was permitted, what about if somebody wants to attach several of these and try to make a twin dwelling or a townhouse, what does that, we've never experienced that, but those are all things we would have to think through, um, also, should they be allowed as accessory structures, if somebody wants to use one of these for a garage or a, a storage building, just personal storage, would it be allowed?
Well, then, here's you and I thought before, before the meeting a little bit, Chad, about the, we went down the aesthetic zoning road one other time, um, very difficult sell, if I remember right, that's back years ago, um... I mean, I guess I'll get some info here, but as far as the, how do you, if you're policing them under the current guideline that we have, then do we have any other jurisdiction over them, other than to say, put a definition of what they are in your, in the, you know, in our building code, or zoning code?
I think for zoning, that's what we would have to do, we would define them, and then we would say, you would say we're gonna allow them, not allow them, or say it's a special exception, now, single wide trailers are a special exception, they've been that way since the seventies, um, of course, when the zoning ordinance was written, there were no building permits, so there was probably no real way to regulate them any other way, so...
Well, if you want the special exception, then it would have to kick down the board of the field, right?
Yeah, and again, then the board, we'd have to put some criteria for the board to make that decision.
Then they, then they'd have an easier chance of putting a caveat on what we would have, right?
They could put conditions, but again, they would potentially have a hard time denying it, um, now, yeah, so, that kicks it down to them, and then they may not be able to say no, but they could say, well, we would prefer, um...
Bottom sidey or...
Or something, they, yeah, they could put those kind of regulations, whatever.
I mean, you think that's even worth trying to accomplish?
I don't know, it's, um, we've had discussion before, I don't know whether it is, is this something that we're gonna be faced with a lot, or this is a few isolated incidents, I, my personal feeling is that they should be regulated similar to the way we regulate single wides, and if that's, if that's, um, a special exception, then I guess that's what it is, um, I don't know how we can, whether we want to be any stricter than that, we certainly don't want to be the fashion police, I mean, it's...
I see, that's the only way you're gonna, you know, do anything, right, by cracking saying it?
Well, again, I guess it, it goes back to what the main concern is, if somebody says, I want to build this container house, and we say, no, we've amended the zoning ordinance, you can't build a container house as we've defined it, and they came to us and said, well, I really like that look, I want to build the same thing, I'll just build it out of lumber conventionally, we wouldn't have anything to say about it, you could build the same exact style and build that, so...
Single wide trailer, I love it.
Yeah, so in that sense, you know, if, if the main concern is just how it looks, we, regulating that is a different, that, that gets into that aesthetic type of zoning, so...
That's why I said, the only way is you can put any kind of a condition on it to go through special exception, right? I mean, we could, I mean, how, how detailed can we get, if we, if we start this process, we have to amend the zoning, field, the zoning board, the reg, right?
Yeah, you'd have to amend it, so something, something like I said, so you define these, uh, you define it, and then you have to go through the ordinance and say, is it permitted, is it not permitted, if you want to go that special exception route, uh, I know with trailers, it, um, it has certain requirements for that, it says, you know, the boards to look at how close they are to the lake and different things like that, so you could put, you can come up with specifics, if there are specific concerns, that would got, help guide the board with that special exception.
Tim, what do you think, you thought you'd ever, you'd ever look at that one?
No, I, I just, I think maybe Bruce has a good idea, I think, maybe we, we, we define them as a single wide mobile home for now, uh... And then see if, see if they do become popular or not, at least, at least they're regulated some by that, at that point, and then see if they amount to more than just that down road or anything, and then we could always redefine it more thoroughly then.
Well, single wides are a very specifically defined thing already, based on them being built to HUD standards, so we can't really just lump them in with that.
Okay.
Um, so we would have to make a specific amendment to the ordinance to consider them something different at this point.
But I think we ought to do something, because right now, we don't, Chad's office has no guidance whatsoever, and no direction, you know, much like the solar panel thing we had a while back, you know, they're not defined, they're not recognized, so they really don't wear a book, right, so I, I think the board should consider giving them some kind of guidance on, whether it's an amendment or what it is.
Yeah, I'm gonna go a different direction, if Chad sits on lap me about how, whether it's a container or not, it still has to meet minimum building code, you know what I mean, so it's gotta be studied out, insulated, all whatever it is, seem like an office, but then they call it affordable housing, and what happens listed for, what, four thirty-eight or something, they're talking about, so, I mean, it's one thing to be affordable, another thing to be practical, and say, you know, it's, it's worth the money to do this, like I could build a stick build up, the same thing for whatever. I think you're right, I think it's gotta go under a special exception, I think that's something we definitely have to think about, um, that allows, that allows the board to, I don't know what's gonna happen, if somebody comes in and takes five containers and sets them on, and wants to set them on a lot, put a roof over them, leaves the containers exposed, that doesn't mean any code, you know, that we have, but he comes in, the guy says, come in and says, well, I wanted to put my boat or whatever, stories, make them stories or whatever, that changes the, you know, there's nothing that, I guess there's anything we can't stop them to do that right now, right?
Yeah, we, well, they have to meet all the building code thing, so...
Right, well, right.
We'd have to meet egress windows, you gotta cut holes in them for egress, you have to...
You said, you said about either making it a, shipping, you know, making it a, uh, not accessory building or whatever, okay, I could put an accessory building, is that as a shipping standard, can it be considered an accessory building?
Yeah, right now, so that would be the other thing, those are kind of the questions I ask, if you want to... Yeah, so if somebody just...
I'm going down to you, wet, right?
Yeah, so...
You guys are hitting on everything I'm thinking about, that's my next one. Worrying about the accessory buildings, because you have that on, it's not gonna have all the typical buildings.
Yeah, yeah, we would probably look at something like, is it safely attached to the ground, do you have a way to support it, um, but like with any other shed or accessory building, you don't have to insulate those, those aren't used for, as occupants, as occupied structures, so...
So I'm back with Tim and Bruce, I think we probably should do something, because, uh, and for me, it's aesthetics, I, I, when you say shipping container, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, what's on a big boat, or what's going down the road, and, uh, you would think somebody would do that, but you think they were trying to make it look nice, somebody said the one that we do have actually looks nice, but what if not? And then if you have an accessory building, it doesn't have to follow these other typical buildings, and they're yard, it's gonna, it, it'll, it'll look like the ugly shipping container that I have in my head, I think that's what you were...
Right, that's right, 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 so, in order to start the process, we have to, we would have to amend the building ordinance.
The zoning ordinance, this would just be in the deep creek watershed, that's the only thing we have zoning, so we could, um, like I've given you a couple possible definitions, so if we agree with those, then the next step would be to say, uh, should a shipping container dwelling then be permitted, not permitted, or permitted by special exception, then is that something we're gonna permit it in all, all districts, or just in certain ones, and other places will allow it, that's the kind of the next step to think through.
I can remember when we were discussing the solar panels, and we were consulting with the county attorney, and Mr. Getty, and he said it's much easier to defend a special exception than it is to try to say, not to ban them altogether, you've been yourself open for, am I saying that right? I think that's what it was that day.
That's exactly what...
Yeah. Because you're just banning certain industry, or banning a certain type of this or that, you have to...
You, you want the staff to come up with the amendment as we need it to be to vote on next meeting, or do you want to try to prove something today, or how you want to?
Well, I don't know, Chad knows not fit to...
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, if you give me, what I was thinking today was that we, we kind of go through this, if everybody says, for instance, yes, we definitely want this to be a special exception, yes, we like these definitions, give us language, then we can kind of take that next step, I wanted to see where everybody was headed first.
That's what we want to try to do.
I like the special exception route myself.
Timmy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you should...
I think I'm full of that, Larry, you okay with it? I mean, I think, I think you need to, uh, make that, if we get into, is that, is that a zoning part of it, is ugly, I know, so when you start getting into that kind of thing, but I think you need to give, you need to have some kind of a guideline to let the board, you know, deal with it once you get there, okay?
So I'm fine with the definitions, maybe we can help him out, I'm fine with the definitions, I think, you guys like the definition that you have? Those are just some general things that I found in some other ordinances, just a general idea, um...
You need us to approve any of this?
Well, I think we can kind of go through, so if we look under the questions, um, we have said, yes, you want to specifically regulate them.
So the special exception under that bullet point.
Yeah, so the second one, if you'll notice, um, commercial and CR one doesn't allow single wide mobile homes at all, so if you wanted to take the route of making this similar to, but, um, the special exception that's already in place for mobile homes, that would be one way to do it, just make shipping container dwellings would basically mirror the current regulations for single wide trailers, and you could make that special exception in the same, in the same areas, and not permitted in the other two.
I think that's a good idea.
Yep.
Okay. So, uh, I'd, uh...
Um, and, and this one was more of a theoretical, the next one, if permitted, what type of dwellings, i.e. single-family, detached, twin, two-family, et cetera, should shipping containers be permitted as an element of, I don't know that we would see that, but I was just thinking, hey, if somebody comes to us and says, I would like to build a, a multi-family dwelling somehow with these connected, um, it would be kind of complicated, we'd have to look at it, but to me, those, in one sense, these are just parts of the building, if you do all the other building code requirements, you could do that, so I don't know if that's something that you want to...
We need to have that by detail.
I think it's better to have the detail than to have it come up, and then Eli and I are trying to find something in the zoning ordinance and don't have anything to go by, so, I think it's better to get that...
Okay, that's a single family, keep it the single family one? Or single family, or, or single wide, uh, regulated on that aspect?
That's a little different, in that I don't know that you can really attach them and form something else.
It applies in those districts, but this, in particular, as far as multi-family, we don't, we don't...
Yeah, because I don't think you could take... Yeah, cause I don't think you could take three trailers and hook them together and make a townhouse out of them.
So we don't say?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't. And maybe this would not come up either. It's just, you just never know what, what's going to come up, so.
I don't, I don't think if we, if we were regulating it with special exception as part of restricting the use of them, the law, they meet the guideline requirements of that special exception, can you say, well, you can't have it for, say, a hotel? You know, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I'm just asking you that question. I mean, I know you need a more detail, but how much detail are we allowed to put in to, to police that? You want to, basically what we're gonna come back and say, it wants to be single family dwelling, detached.
Yeah, that would be one thing. I guess that's the other, and hotel is a good point. I hadn't really thought of that. But something like what Smiley's done, that's a, a hotel with, the units are separated and he has to check in down below. I guess technically, you know, that's something to think about. Could you decide you wanted to do that same situation and all of my hotel units are separate container homes? Somebody could try something like that too, so.
That, that's what I said to you, because I, I saw that someplace, article I read or something I saw, you know, the internet or something, that they, they set up a bar through a column, column roof over top of them, and they stacked them and then it just, you know, it's crazy, but that's out, I don't know what kind of zone he had, but it was, you know, they just, they just took off the, the main front door, put a door, a glass door in front of it, and that was inside of the room of each one of those units. So I'm just saying, that, that's the trend, you know, that's a trendy thing that's happened, and I just don't know whether that's, you know.
The one that's being offered by Rayleigh, it's, it has two, it has two containers. Looks like they're two side by sides, so.
Yeah, I think it's still just a single family home though. So you can, it's not something where they have separate living facilities in each one.
That, that would be my concern with one, you know, I guess what you understand is how creative people can become. When their regulation is upset, I mean, you talk about detail, how much, you know, how much detail can you get into and say, okay, you can't do it anymore. But like I said about the hotel or motel or whatever, that's just something I have to see. That, you know, it was gone, wherever that some place I went.
And all that would still be dependent on your typical density standards. You couldn't do it on a really small lot. If you had five acres where you potentially could do five houses, let's say you potentially could do some different things.
The single family?
Yeah, that would be, that's another option is to say that it's, they shall not be an element of any other type of multi-family or hotel use. That's another option.
Well, with everything he said, I thought, that's where I'm at, single family.
Okay, so we're just gonna say single family and we have the separate category for TBRUs, but that's, we, those are basically single family as far as construction is concerned. So I think we would include those two, but nothing else. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
From Bruce's too.
I think you get down to the thing where shipping container be permitted as accessory structure. If we're going through all this, cannot be stopped.
Well, you, you could. I mean, we can put it in the ordinance if somebody challenges it. That gets to be more of a legal question. Um, I think we have at least one case where, um, these are being used as a accessory dwelling, Paradise Run. So I think we have one perhaps that we've permitted in the watershed. I can't think of any others. Um, but the accessory building, you know, that, again, as long as it's tied down on a safe foundation or safe, um, being affixed to the ground safe, I don't know that we would have much else to say about it. You could just put one down and won't you be accept backs? So it, it would be a little more open for accessory buildings.
The only, only thing about being used in the accessory building, they're not gonna paint it up nice and blue like that. But it's still gonna have the ship, shipping container numbers on it and maybe something in Russian or Chinese or, or dinged up or danged up, you know, so they're not gonna be pretty, cause we have some, but.
Yes, I think that's a little different. You could just see one just kind of right off the ship basically and placed on a lot, so.
We don't know where to regulate that.
No, there's nothing in there to regulate how it looks.
We can put in, we can put in your notes or your name, when you put, approve this, we can put in there, it cannot be used as, as a, as a accessory structure.
Yeah, you could just put.
Whether it can be contested or not, if it's.
You put it's not permitted in accessory structures, but.
And that's, that's the, again, that's the way you want to word it, isn't it?
Now that I've heard. I didn't think about that before.
I was leaning on to make the accessory structure to match the home dwelling itself, but after what he said, I'm like, I have this now. I'm on the no side. I like to say no to everything, but getting back to what Bruce said. With the lawyer, it's kind of hard to, it's like, absolutely no.
You can bring one in temporary while you're building the house or something like that.
Right, I mean, I, I've used them all. We, we all use them, right? They, they don't go away for you. Now that'd be a complaint, cause they were there to start with, you know, but. You know, you put all the people's furniture in, you put, you know, flights and stuff inside one, and then you left that there to get the house, but then you move it back in. But I'm just saying, that, that there's, there's always a gray area in everything that you do. And if you, if you don't cover that gray area, somebody's gonna circumvent it. You see it happen all the time. And it's, that's why I said about being an accessory building, you know, uh, it could take ten years to remodel my house, right?
We have a little flexibility with the type of structures we allow as temporary to construction projects. So I don't know if we want to put something in there about that or just leave it as not permitted.
I'm just saying not permitted. Of course, we can change our mind once we, before we. Or something else comes up. That's where I'm leaning.
Comfortability, not permitted.
Yeah. Yeah, people build a half million to multi-family dollar homes. I don't think they want a shipping container. On their next, the next law or. What they're staring at.
Would you regulate that by saying that had to be on a permanent foundation or something like that? Would that really be?
Well, we don't require that for accessory buildings. You know, if you want to bring in a shed and put it on a gravel.
Drabble that.
Yeah, we allow that.
That's what I said. I mean, we're getting into a slippery flow. And the more, the more things that you bring up, the more, I mean, I mean, are we better off to say they're not permitted in the watershed? I mean, is that, I'm not, I'm throwing it out there. It's, I'm sure people are thinking it's, it's a non-permitted use.
Probably the easiest way to go.
What do you, you're, you're the guy that's gotta deal with it.
Just say rob any type of shipping container.
Rob rush.
I'm fine with that too, but then I'm.
That's certainly, I think, from a regulatory standpoint, that's the easiest. Um, you know, and Bruce doesn't have to hear special exceptions at the zoning board about them and make that decision. Whether somebody would challenge that. I perceive that, I don't know.
Doesn't seem like it. I don't think there's shipping container part to it either. But maybe that's a question for a later.
I mean, we get a lot of questions about it. Eli and I probably fielded many, many questions about this. I think once we start saying like, well, you do know you have to cut holes for windows and we start going through all this, you've got to build inside it, insulate it, you've got to do this. I think what ninety-nine percent of those people are like, oh, this is a lot harder than we thought. So we're not seeing tons of these being built. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if we had a, a few every year. But I don't, I think a lot of our interest in them goes away once people realize it's not going to be easy. It's not something you're just gonna pull off the back of a truck and then you're moving in two weeks later. It's not that process. So I don't, I don't see that we're gonna see a massive influx.
Like, so you say, it has happened, it has.
Yeah, it has, so it's possible.
Well, I guess I'm saying is that the simple thing to do is just say it's not permitted in the watershed, be done with it. Or you're gonna have to come up with some way to, to regulate it, which can't be easily circumvented. I don't know how you're gonna do it. I don't know, it's gonna be really tough to, to police that. There's an accessory building, that is some of the others though.
My humble opinion, they don't belong in the watershed.
What's that?
I said, my humble opinion, they don't belong in the watershed. They don't belong in the.
That's definitely.
Can police that or not?
But I mean, it's simpler in the sense of, you know, you just make it not permitted. So from a regulatory standpoint, it's not permitted. You know, you may have to answer, somebody has like a really cool design, say, well, why wouldn't this fit? You know, so you do have those instances where then saying, no, cause we're not allowing that. But regulatory, that is simpler. That's a very clean way to do it.
I just, I got a funny feeling it's gonna make like a lot easier for you, more. It was only to field board and for you guys and for everybody else involved. I'm just, I brought that up because I'm sure everybody was thinking it. Because I really don't know what I could say, even because the question one I brought up about the accessory and the other issues you're gonna have. Because it's just like, uh, you know, I mean, I, you know, we're, the industries are trendy and some of this stuff's trendy now, you know, like the, the Bar and Dominion and the, and the bar and the bus house, where they put apartments in a bus. You know, you take a bus, turn into an apartment, set it someplace, take tires off, pack it and set it down, you know? All kinds of stuff going on. People are seeing that on the, hey, Donnie did this. And some of this stuff is trying to say, we don't, we can't. I don't know how you, one, how you police it and two, is it worth letting it get started? Once it starts, then you're gonna, it's gonna snowball. You know, I mean, the hotel thing was something I just happened to see, you know, like you said, a video or something, that somebody did it in some resort, someplace. It was neat. But, well, you know, it's, it's something you want, you know, deep creek watershed. I don't know. That's the decision you guys have to make.
And the rest of the county's not zoned, so there are options to do things outside of what, so just in general, a lot of things we do or don't allow in the watershed. There are, there's flexibility in the rest of the county to do those things.
Tim, you're going pretty quiet.
I imagine there's some already in the watershed, so they would be grandfathered, right?
Yeah, anytime we make a change, anything that was there becomes.
The other thing, uh, Bruce and Tony mentioned that sometimes they use them temporarily. Would you allow them, like our, in our neighborhood now, Troy, or not Troy, but the neighbors are adding on to a house in our neighborhood. And they put all, they put all their contents in a container temporarily till the house gets finished. But, uh, is there a need to have, allow them for thirty days for some reason or sixty days or, for those kind of purposes?
I think we're just calling that permanent structure, we're not calling it that temporarily.
Yeah, cause I mean, I know you do it all the time, but usually whoever takes six months or a year, you know, it's kind of hard to. I mean, I don't know, the more you think about it, again, Chad, you know more than anybody here.
And this, this is one, and those are those ones that are rusty colored and with numbers on them. That's, that's what's in our neighborhood now.
Felt like pickled.
It was gonna be two or three months, but it turned out to six or eight now, so.
I think we're just calling that permanent structure, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna look up. We do have a little flexibility, if I could find it real quick, about, um, what we can do. The zoning administrator may grant a permit for a non-conforming temporary building or use incidental to a construction project. When such building or use is reasonably required for such project. Such temporary permit shall terminate at the time of completion of the project. So I think that gives us a little flexibility. If somebody said, hey, I want to store all my furniture in there, I think we would, you know, we could put that as part of their building permit. And allow it.
And we use that sometimes if somebody says, I want to park my RV there for, typically those are only allowed three months. Somebody says, I'm gonna park it there while I'm building, we'll allow things like that.
Talking about the school bus or whatever, have you seen the one out? It's on one thirty-five, um, just past Turkey Neck, headed to town before you get into Kings.
Well, I didn't see that, yeah.
There's one that's backed in there somewhere, and they pop the top off and everything, yeah. Painted it sky blue or something. It's pretty cool looking. It looks kind of hippie-ish, you know? But, uh, but it, we chuckle at it every time we go by, but you'll have to look for it there.
Well, the guy did these ones that he showed for the, he's in front of the frontals, they were pretty, they were really neat, dad. Kitchens about everything, just like, they're like four of them sitting around, and then they had like a fire pit and stuff. I mean, I couldn't say I do that, but they were different kind of, it's the reality of it. So why we have to put together for this is, if you want to, if you, we don't want to allow it all in the watershed, we could take care of that now and just.
Well, we'd stop to, I think we need to amend the ordinance. So let me, let me write something up that's more official, that basically will continue with these definitions.
And it'll have to go to the committee, right?
Yes, and I will also first share it with Mike Getty, you know, get his opinion on it. I'll, I'll draw something up to say, look, the board, the planning commission has, we talked about this, they want to move forward with not allowing these. Here's our definitions. Here's how we're just going to say it's not permitted. And then I'll lend that by him and get an opinion. And then we can look at that at one of the next meetings. Then I think, once I present something formal, you can all vote on it. And if you approve it, then it has to go to the county commissioners, and the county commissioners have to have public hearing on it.
Okay. Anything else about this? I mean, is that, you tell me, you tell me I'm wrong by saying that, is it something we think would be a lot easier to handle for you?
Well, it's really, I, I think it's up to the planning commission how they want to handle that. I mean, we can do it different ways. I think we really just, it's up to you guys how you want, you know, what you see is, as you mentioned, you don't want them in the watershed. We can make it happen however, however you want.
I just thought, you have to see what kind of feedback you get once it goes to public hearing, if there's any negative public. Yeah, you can see, I guess that'd be the thing. But I just, I look at it from an administrative standpoint, it has to be a nightmare to try to put something in like that. And then like you tried to do with it, everything else, it just gets to the point where, you know, and like nothing, we're being proactive, it's instead of reactive in a sense. I mean, there's already a couple of them, only happened once. Now we at least move forward a little quicker with it hopefully.
Yeah, the only thing I'll point out, just in general, anytime we talk about something being a special exception, it's pretty hard for the board to deny it. So if there's something in particular that you're trying to control, they can do certain things like quiet hours or fencing or things like that. Very specific things, but it's awful hard for them to just turn them down. So, um, if we're just kind of kicking the can down the road to the, the board of appeals, we shouldn't use that if we think they're going to deny something, cause unless it's in a really bad location, they have a little power to deny. Now, again, they can put conditions, they could, that would be a chance for them to look at them. But without some guidelines for them, um, you know, I don't like leaving them hanging where they don't really have anything to go by either. So then we just send it down there and then their hands are kind of tied and they approve it, so.
So then see what Mr. Getty says.
Yep. Okay, well, I'll draw something up a little more formal as an actual amendment language, and then we'll see what he says.
Now, for this, for the, uh, accessory structures, did you want to try to discuss that in here or do you do any that?
I, I think it's the same thing. Um, as you can see, I put it down there. I put some notes about what the existing regulations are. Accessory buildings are, depending on where they're located and what zone, it's somewhat complicated sometimes. Cause depending on what size they are, they have different setbacks. It's like residential, it's different setbacks. Um, you can see I've listed the different things, so, um, in the same way, we can make those accessory, those existing setbacks more stringent. You know, if that's the concern, if these are too close to the road, you can change setbacks, you can change the height regulations, you can change the size. Uh, I threw that in there, cause we sometimes do see very big accessory buildings too. So while we were having that discussion, I, I threw that in. That's not related to the one on deep creek drive. Um, and then are, are there any other controls that need put into place? So I kind of throw that out to the board, what they want to, what you all want to do with those.
I mean, this, again, comes down to how much power, how much authority can you have over accessory? I mean, can we make it so stringent that, no accessory building?
Well, I would just point out that it's going to affect everybody. So once we start changing the setbacks, it's not just, you know, one lot, it's everybody in the watershed or at least everybody in that district. So I think, um, if we're going to, to make a change when you think through, it's going to affect every single, every single unit somebody wants to put in.
So what started this conversation was a certain outbuilding in, what was that down there?
Down, town center.
Was it town center? And setback on the road, what, five feet?
Yeah, it's, so the front setback, uh, for single family homes is fifteen in town residential, ten in town center and forty in the other residential ones. So just in general, in that town center district or even town residential, you can be pretty close with the house or the accessory building.
If that building there was like five feet, right?
It was ten. We have a site plan saying it was ten. So it met the front setback.
Then the height was of concern, cause it's higher than the house, I think we said, right? The roof, the roof line's higher than the house.
It, it may sit higher, but I don't believe it was.
Right, that's right.
So the maximum height of it is, of an accessory structure is twenty foot, is measured between the mean level of the ground abutting the building to a point midway between the highest, lowest points of the highest roof. So that's like an average of the slope of the roof. And then the overall is thirty-two from the very top to the very lowest ground of budding. So if you have a steep lot, you could potentially have even a very small shed being higher than the house if it's a big enough lot, it's steep enough. If you have a steep lot, you could potentially have even a very small shed being higher than the house, if it's a big enough lot, it's steep enough, so.
And I understand it met requirements, but when you see it from the road, it's, that roof line's higher than the house. And I think that was some of the concern with the commission.
Yeah, yeah, I think you, you know, there are always, um, potential outliers, you have lots that are configured strange. Or somebody does something that's kinda pushing it, and you might have a. A, a configuration that really sticks out, the question is, do we wanna make changes to avoid that? Or is that something that's gonna proliferate or happen again, or is it maybe based on unique circumstances on one lot?
And if the issue is in town center, what do they play it out for?
That's the only one that I'm aware of, there may be other ones that are of concerns, but.
That whole, that whole road along there had an issue with close, close proximity to the road anyway, from that point out, far away back to the road anyway.
Partially that's by design, I mean, that's an area where you have public water and sewers, so you have smaller lot sizes, and you're, you're willing to put more units there. Because that's where you have the infrastructure, part of it's also based on the fact that there are things there that predate zoning, so you have things that don't meet standards, just because they.
Not, not being a builder, does it, does, would, would those structures not been that high for to have a traditional roof on it? Is it because it's just a one pitch roof, is, does that make it higher?
Sure, it could have been at that high, but.
Instead of a peak roof.
You might, you might have been as high, but it wouldn't have looked as high, you know.
And that's cause there's a flat side facing the road too, if the roof line would have come back towards the road, it might have. Look differently to us.
Uh, so I guess, next question is gonna be the planning committee, is how do you want to change any regulation with the accessory building, or do you wanna change any regulations?
Yeah, I don't know, you know. None of that really, how you can, um. We hope that that. Situation doesn't continue to happen, that one, I think, particularly, that's just walk right out of the open, everybody sees it. So it brings your attention to it, if it was back somewhere else, of course, town center is probably only right along there, and where a couple other places in the district out there in many.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of town center, um, you have some south of the bridge as well.
And there's two more lots there, so you're probably gonna see two more similar situation. One on both sides that is a problem, and that might be, like I said, it might be the only one to guarantee that situation.
And, and you're, you're seeing some more of that, it's more of a. Non-traditional, yeah, it's kinda maybe new.
I don't know, I, I just think you're getting, you're getting into a gray area, man, we wanna, we wanna broach out right now, or you wanna just kinda let this go with what they have? On our zoning as it is, or you wanna try to change something?
I don't know, I don't know, I can change it, I, I would like to, I would like to keep that from happening, yeah, but I don't, I don't have.
I mean, what do you think, Chad, I mean, you're, you're regulating it pretty well as it is, right, I mean.
Yeah, and that's, I, I mean, when I started kinda writing out the existing regulations, you see, it's not. It's not an easy thing with accessory buildings, you have different criteria, lakefront, long lakefront, the different cri- in the different districts, so. Um.
Is it accessory because it's, it's not connected?
That's part of it, just in general, things like garages, sheds, pools, they're considered accessory.
It's not connected to the house, right?
Yeah, if they were connected to the house, we would just, yeah, it's just part of the house, it has different setbacks, it has stricter setbacks. And accessory buildings can actually usually go closer to the side and rear, depending on if it's lakefront, um, so it. It's not an easy thing to just, you know, say, well, we're just gonna always make them a little, little farther back. Um, you can do that, but then we have to think through about lake residential and all the other districts too. And this, so I, I think part of the big question is, is this a one-time incident, or is this something that we. Are we gonna see a proliferation of, we're gonna see again and again, if it is something that we're gonna see a lot of, I think it's good to. Think, you know, think ahead and try to amend the ordinance, if it's a one-time thing. Zoning is never perfect, you're always gonna have things that are legal, but maybe we don't like the looks of, or kinda. Really push the limits and aren't really what anybody envisioned, but I don't know that we wanna. Make drastic changes to the ordinance to fix one thing, and then cause ourselves a bunch of problems with. Several other things that people were doing illegally before.
About the only thing you could do is subtly change the setback or the median height. Subtly, you know, if you wanna do something, but otherwise, maybe do like the other, we kinda watch it.
But I'm pretty sure that'll meet direct, that'll meet the height requirement we have now, but I'm saying, if you bring it down to. We'll write it down to, you know.
Yeah, I remember up on, oh, I forget, across from the old information booth, what's that? Yeah, I remember we had an issue up there, trying to figure the median height out in that steep slope, I remember there was a house up there. We were discussing that, it's been years ago, but, but it's quite a complicated, uh, equation.
Yeah, that was an issue with the highest and lowest parts of a roof, and that one had a, it was an isolated roof, and the question was, well, what about when it's an isolated roof? Are we just counting that one, or are we counting the whole roof structure, and we, we amended the ordinance to say the highest part of any roof. So if you do have that isolated roof, that's what we're counting as the highest point.
Anyway, we use a special exception on these accessory buildings, they help us, I mean, there would be a. At least we would look at every, every situation and have a chance.
You'd probably deal, be dealing with hundreds of special exceptions, potentially, and we do a lot of accessory buildings from. Little sheds that are just a zoning permit, you know, if it's less than two hundred forty square foot, we don't do a building permit, we still do zoning, we do a lot of. Feet by ten sheds and things like that, that we just check setbacks, so.
You might have to have three or four meetings in mind.
And again, you, you know, if you have, if you kinda push it down the road as a special exception, I think then you wanna have some guidelines, say, well, what are you trying to do with the? Special exception hearing, you know, do you have something specific in mind, or otherwise, then you're just presented with it. And you're, you may not have any direction of what you're going to, you know, approve or deny at the special exception hearing.
If it was, the, the, the main problem is what, what other. Town center is the one that has the ten-foot setback, what other, what else, what other big, uh, district has the, what are the other setbacks?
We get fifteen in town residential and forty in lake residential now, and the other, in lake residential, if it's a lakefront lot. There are certain times, depending on how big it is, then you can go within twenty-five at the front, but you have to stay farther away from the lake side. Cause typically in lake residential, you can stay forty foot from the front, and then five foot to the side and rear, but it's kinda flipped a little bit around the lake. Cause I think they wanna keep accessory structures from lakesides, you can go a little closer to the roads, you could potentially do twenty-five foot. For accessory structure in lake residential one, which would be lakefront lots.
So if they were allowed, then is it fair to say that this particular situation that we're seeing is most. Likely to happen again, if it happens again, in a town center district?
That's where it would be most obvious, so potentially you could have a, a very large accessory building, twenty-five foot. From a lake residential one, lakefront lot, you could have it, um, fifteen feet from a town residential lot. And it'd be ten from a town center lot, but again, those, you can also build your house at that place too, at least in town residential and town center. So you could be able, build a very big, you know, flat-sided wall on a house or something, ten foot away, and same thing, town residential, so you could do. Cause that's the front setback.
That five foot make that much difference in the situation we have right now? I mean, that, that's what we gotta look at, is there, there's good, you want both of them, which, well, how do you, I mean, you're right, downtown is the one that has the least amount of setback. Do you bump it out to fifteen, like, you know, everything else, or do you?
No, I was just, I was just wondering, just talking out, thinking out loud, if you could make these accessory outbuildings a special exception in town center. Without doing it in all the districts, would that would. Start to answer with the problem, with, with you though, perceive problem.
Potentially could do it just in one of the districts, it could be permitted in some, special exception, you know, there's.
Yeah. Does that help us at all? But again, like Chad said, you gotta know, you have to know what we're looking for.
Yeah, unless you have something specific in mind that helps you make that decision. I think you push it down the road, and you guys are presented that special exception, do you really have any reason to deny it? And if that's the case, I don't, yeah, there's not really a guideline there.
But the conditions are, I can say.
Yes.
I don't want that, that's, I don't want that high.
You want the roof, you want the roof line to go the other way, or something like that? That might not could do that.
Yeah, it's a fine line, guys, I get between being, you know, the architectural committee and being just as that in the board.
I mean, that, that may be something you wanna run up the flagpole, you're turning, you know, and just.
Just. I'm not saying that the board would recognize the situation, but now that we see it, I will recognize the next time, you know. A special exception would give you the chance to see them without, and before they grow up.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, if we could figure out some, some minor direction for.
I mean, yeah, again, you can pick any of those, any or all of those districts and make things special exception. Um, I don't know how many we would have done last year, I mean, it would send a substantial number your way, I would think of. Different sheds and garages and all kinds of accessory buildings in town center, town center's not one of the bigger districts, so. Um, we may be able to pull something up about that, to give you a general idea, what that would have meant, let's say for last year, how many you would write down. With special exception in general, um, you know, the board did deny the one solar field. And because it was looked at as very unique, had impacts greater than anyplace else, so. As, as accessory buildings have proliferated throughout town center, I don't know that you could ever outright deny one. That would be very hard, because I think they're already there, so I think the use itself will be hard, you could put conditions.
Um, and when you say outbuilding, you're regulating everything from the, I wish we built a shed, the Javala side of the road, to. The thing that we, that we were talking about, and that's not, that's not the intent either.
Yeah, because basically, we just have a category now of accessory buildings, and that includes sheds, pool houses, playhouses. And a swimming pool, all kinds of stuff are in that general accessory structure, accessory building category, and it catch all of those.
Oh, that town would take them for a couple days, huh?
Yeah, that's not the, that's not the intent, though. Regulate the guy that wants a little ten or twelve shed for, you know, lawnmowers, I, I want some way to regulate. These guys that are parking forty-foot motorhomes ten feet from the road.
Yeah, it starts to get a little complex, I mean, you could put a certain size.
I probably shouldn't sit down out loud, but I mean, that's what I'm, that's. The bigger issues of building, what I was trying to. Trying to address, um, again, is it gonna happen again?
You think it's hard, I mean, there are, I think, other jurisdictions that regulate total lot coverage, and different, there are different things you can do, but they start to get very complex. From a, a regulatory standpoint, um, you have a lot of these small lots that people are covering with a lot of stuff, and it creates problems, but. Like it's hard for us to regulate when we start saying, you know, accessory building can only be this percentage of a house, or something like that, that would. Would be a potential solution, but it would get pretty complicated.
It's just affecting, we can ask you for any opinion, or what are you, what we're thinking, and what do you think?
If it's something specific, I can ask him, um. Yeah, I would prefer to say, you know, if we said, we want to regulate all accessory buildings over this size and make them. Do something specific, I could present that to him.
I don't know how to end that. I'll tell you something to think about, talk about, cause I mean, it, it's like, it's like we talked about with the container, you're, you're getting into, or specifically. The target is shot at these accessory buildings, but how do you, if you don't do one of them, you have to do them all, if you do one of them, I think you need to do them all. And you guys don't wanna pull this little five-by-five shed that's gonna go.
Well, that's not ten of them, I'm gonna do.
It's not, I'm, I'm, you know what I'm saying, it, yeah.
That's to me, that's to me.
We know, we know what we're looking for, just try to get to that point, point eight, or point eight. Right. Maybe, maybe you can, you can think about it deeper some way, that you can see that it, we can make it work without, how to take all of them under the, you know, under the block.
Well, you can do it with size or something, um.
We might be on some there, a lot percentage of lot coverage, the percentage of the house. Versus footprint versus.
It just gets, it just gets a little complicated for us to try to figure all that out.
There's no real easy way out of it, I don't think.
I don't, I don't see an easy way with this one, I mean, the easy ways are to make kind of a more broad, say, look, you can't be in the front. You've gotta be farther back with these, but I think that may catch a lot of people, um, that weren't causing an issue, and you would then. Regulate those.
And if a five feet wasn't made out like.
I mean, all down through Deep Creek Drive, there is garages up by the road that.
Right.
That you never even notice.
Right, no, I agree.
This is so tall and so big, I just, when I go by there, I s- I just see zoning failure, I mean, that could be just me. You know, I think, is there a way to avoid that?
Well, maybe just as a devil's advocate, I would say, like, but if you see a lot that all do meet that setback, and there was no issue with them. Then maybe zoning is doing its job, it's just more of an aesthetic with that one. Is, is the other way to look at that, I mean, yeah, I, I think the zoning failure would be, is if you drove by and said. All of these garages are way too close, we need to do something, cause everybody's building their garage too close, we need to get them all back, that's kinda more the way I think about zoning. Um, the strange case, every once in a while, you kinda shrug your shoulders and say, well. One percent of these are always gonna be, somebody does something, maybe we don't like the looks of, or, or out of the ordinary, and zoning can't solve all of the issues. That, that's just kind of a point of discussion.
That's just left for you to look, you could, you know, like, look of it. How do you break it down, I mean, that's, I mean, it's just, it's, it's tough, and I think that's why you need, I mean, you need to kinda. Figure out a way just to take a certain amount of these accessory buildings into. We can, you know, special exception or whatever, I, I don't know of a way to do that, but I think that'd be something to look at.
Well, I mean, I think, I've put all the existing regulations there, I mean, we could just kinda leave it that everybody. Thinks through those and brainstorms them, and if somebody comes back with something specific to say, hey, look, I see something in here that. I think if we tweak this setback, or we have some clearer criteria for this specific type of structure, is what we want to have a special exception, or something. We can certainly kinda reinvestigate that, or kinda reopen this discussion.
Able to, that's been this work, follow discussion.
I think so, probably better. Anything else you think of, Chad?
I don't, is there anything else you need from us, or do we wanna kinda keep the?
Eli, do you have anything you wanna put into the meeting, I apologize for not calling right there, but kinda stepped behind Ruth, and I guess, then I look over there, he was.
I just, Eli's doing a lot of permits and zoning, building, everything too, so I was asking, kinda sit in.
Right, that's fine, I, anytime you wanna speak up, speak up, man, cause, you know.
We'll entertain you.
Larry has to go make hay, so we're gonna let him get out.
Okay, yeah.
I go help you, but. Don't say I'm much of a farmer anymore.
Always had mine done by July fourth, I haven't even started yet.
Okay, next meeting's August second, right?
Yes, thanks, everybody.